Good morning. Welcome to the Thursday, February 17th work session. Commissioner Peters let me know she's running a few minutes behind. Let's jump right into it. Item number one, 2022 Strategic Planning Session Follow-Up. Mr. Burton, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. So this morning, we've got an update on the strategic plan. So this is a follow-up from what we heard as we were establishing your priorities and stuff for next year. So Aubrey Phillips is going to walk through that. You had also asked for some various things about different revenue sources and questions about different funds. And so we're going to provide an update on those as well. And this will lead to the workshop that you asked for on March 3rd, which is a transportation workshop. And so then, so we've kind of, kind of building to that work session. So with that, I'll turn it over to Aubrey, and we'll get going.
Good morning, Commissioners. Happy to join you here today for a recap from our January 18th Strategic Planning Session. Hard to believe it's been almost a month, but happy to share a recap with you today and talk about direction for next steps. So just to refresh your memory, since it has been about a month, on January 18th, we met to discuss key pressing issues, where you were, had pride in the county's accomplishments. And there was generally consensus that there was an outstanding achievement in our collaboration and partnership in responding to and delivering services during COVID-19, really grounded in strong collaboration and local partnerships that stood out statewide. And then we shifted our focus to what are the issues we need to focus on now and moving forward? And the board emphasized a few key items. One, affordability of living in Pinellas County and how we address that, make sure that that's a priority for us moving forward. Regional transportation issues and how we come bring to bear progress in that area. Related to that, road technology and sewer and water infrastructure as a key focus. Small business support and how we support workforce development in our changing economy. How we tackle environmental sustainability and resiliency amidst growing environmental threats to our community. And how we continue to leverage the partnerships that we've built over time and that helped us be successful in responding to COVID-19. So we also talked about and refreshed ourselves on the strategic plan framework that we first presented to you in January of 2020. And here you can see that this is where we would really bring focus to those goals and issues that you had mentioned. So this example we're showing here today is updated from the one that we looked at on January 18th with a focus on infrastructure, which was a key issue that you all had identified. Here you can see that in 2022, as we discussed, this year, we're working on clarifying the key intended outcomes. So a lot of our discussion on January 18th focused around what success looked like to you as Commissioners. And staff are continuing that work, and that's being informed by many of our other strategic plans, master plans, and those sorts of documents. And that is really positioning us for doing an update to the strategic plan in 2023 that would work towards establishing smart objectives and making sure that we're engaging staff and the community in that effort.
But this, this really is showing you kind of the framework, how we're going to take each one of the program areas or areas that you've emphasized, and then measure how we're doing with making progress on each area. And that'll come back then in the quarterly updates that we'll provide to you, that then we can talk about each one.
I promise I didn't set him up to say that, but the next slide is our quarterly update. So the framework is how we bring focus to those goals that are most important. And the quarterly update is where it will bring visibility so that you can make sure that there's accountability over time that we're delivering on our commitments and that we're achieving on those key goals. So here you can see an example of an area of the quarterly update. We're focused on our strategy related to infrastructure. So this is a sample. You'll be seeing the next of these, I believe, in the April timeframe as an update to what you saw prior to your January Strategic Planning Workshop. These updates combine key outcome indicators in the community and for the organization, as well as highlighted accomplishments and ongoing initiatives related to each of the strategies of the strategic plan. This will be a way for us to talk with you about some of those key outcomes as staff do their work over the coming year. One of the things that was brought up as a suggestion during that January 18th discussion was this idea of moving infrastructure up from a strategy to have a goal focused around infrastructure specifically. So we did want to circle back with you all on that suggestion and see if there's support for moving forward in that direction. Is that something we want to consider this year as we're aligning the strategic plan? And how you would like to move forward with that suggestion?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I think the reason I wanted to separate it out was regarding, it regards our penny for Pinellas, penny, the funding that we do there for capital. It focuses on the resiliency issues. It refocuses on our enterprise funds that need, whether it's water, sewer, any utility, any transportation issue that goes around. It interacts with partners in a deep way, with our state partners, local partners, regional issues. And when we made the number one project, State Road 69, 275, a couple of years ago. And so I think it really just needs to separate itself out and be on its own. It's not any different than the other three, but it brings it to the surface, I think, on an issue that is so critically important. And it goes through all of these different groups, but I think it isolates it. And it allows not only us to look at it that way, but also our residents who are looking at our strategic plan and going, oh, that's, that's an area that speaks to me, and that's about infrastructure. And that's about, what are the key things that we do? They're embedded here in other things, but I think it separates out, and I think it would, it would sit well in terms of having a fourth pillar. That's just my opinion, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Drager. Other thoughts?
Yeah, beats me.
I think the administrator's looking for a head up or down, or... No, you gotta press the button there on the right.
I think we're moving in the right direction for the update. I think as much information that we can provide that shows not only how we're trying to streamline functions, but where we are cross-pollinating projects that can correlate one to another so that we have a better handle, I think, on what we're doing going forward, and we're able to explain it to the public as it relates to where we're going. So this really clearly identifies it for me, from someone who, you know, just came on board and had really had a chance to work with and massage it previously. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I was just going to say I don't really care if we separate it out. I mean, I think as long as we're doing our main function and just focusing on infrastructure, doesn't matter where it is, as long as we have good goals in place and good objectives to measure that. I don't know, that's not particularly helpful, but I don't, I don't really care.
Whoops.
I would just say that we produce a CIP every year as a separate budget document. And so it is already tracked within that CIP forecast and separate document. But, I mean, I guess I'm okay with it, but I, we already do track it, so.
Commissioner Long?
Thank, thank you for the opportunity to weigh in. I agree with Commissioner Gerard and Commissioner Seal. I think there are many ways in which we try so hard to disseminate all of, all of the multitude of things that we're doing. And I, I just applaud the efforts of the staff and see no reason to micromanage exactly, you know, how we lay it all out. As long as Commissioner Seal said, we already share in many different ways and through many different vehicles and social media, everything we're doing, from dotting i's to crossing t's. I think it's a little overkill, focus on this particular kind of thing. Just my opinion.
Yeah, I guess I was hoping to see kind of what it would look like as a separate, you know, pulled out, like we have our strategic plan with our first-class service, our public health, our environmental, economic growth, quality work, to see what that would look like if we pulled it out of four and put it on its own, kind of what some of those bullets, if we're pulling some of the bullets from the other things, to actually see what it would look like. I, I'm fine doing it. I think infrastructure, you know, one, this is really a, I mean, it is a public-facing document, but really, this is for us. This is guiding, guiding principles. And infrastructure is what we do. You know, there's other governmental entities that do a lot of other stuff, but infrastructure is our, is our thing. That's what we do. So I have, I think it's right to highlight it, to kind of maintain it. That's what we sold as the penny for Pinellas is the thing, was infrastructure. So I'm fine doing it. I would like to see how it would kind of, where would we pull some of the things out of the different categories to put under infrastructure, kind of how it would look that way.
Well, with that, then, I mean, I think I, I hear a consensus to move forward on that. What we'll do is when then, when we bring that quarterly, we'll break that down. So we'll have those outlined. And you'll also see all the other ones where they have the, the individual items that we're going to track for each one. So we'll break it down that way and, and bring it back to you.
Very good.
Perfect. Thank you. So few, final update. So today, we're doing the recap of the discussion. And then next up, Chris Rose, our Director of Office of Management and Budget, will share the revenues update that Barry had mentioned. And then other items that had been in our parking lot that you all had asked for updates on are being added to the work session calendar. So those will be scheduled in the coming year. And then last up, before I hand the mic off to Chris Rose, really where this is coming together. You know, we talked about the strategic plan, making sure that we're focused on the goals that are most important to the county and to our residents. The quarterly updates, bringing visibility and accountability to that. And then here you can see how, how this comes together, where our existing plans, like the Sustainability and Resiliency Action Plan, the comp plan that you'll be hearing about next week, that those things are informing the strategic plan, that really drives the budget. The budget obviously moderates what we can accomplish in, from a strategic perspective. And that, that kind of clarity is really helping to enable continuous improvement towards those key intended outcomes, delivering better outcomes for our community and for our residents. So thank you. And with that, I'll hand it off to Chris to talk about revenues.
Thank you, Commissioners. Good morning.
Good morning.
Again, Chris Rose with the Office of Management and Budget. Coming out of that Strategic Planning Workshop that we had in January, the request for a primer on specific revenues, we immediately started working with the county attorney's office. That was our first stop. And thank you to the folks in there and helping us clarify. So you've got some slides in front of you that sort of give you the pedigree, the state statute where some of these things come from and some thoughts. The one thing I want to make sure that I hit home is estimates are estimates. So we've got some estimates on here. They're going to change, but they are our best estimate at the moment. So some of the revenues that you'll see there on the, on the first page, utility taxes, franchise fees, all those came from a request from Commissioner Seal for a document that Ford Pinellas puts together. So we have just passed out a copy of that to all of you. It's in the agenda item as well. So you can take a look at what some of the other jurisdictions nearby are doing. I'll go to the next page, and we'll talk about utility taxes. So it's in the state statute there. The jurisdiction is only our unincorporated area, the MSTU. And we think it would raise a few million dollars, about 31 million is what we're looking at, if we were to do it. It could only be spent in the unincorporated area, not in the cities. Okay? Yes, okay.
It, whether it's county-wide or unincorporated makes a big difference, depending on what we're going to use the revenue to do. So for instance, if we're going to do all roads, well, then that needs to be more of a county-wide, you know, because our roads go through cities and things like, versus if we just do unincorporated local roads, well, then that could be on the MSTU side. So then that would be a revenue source. And we're breaking these down because when we get to the transportation discussion here in March, then we'll, we'll highlight these, and then we can talk about different strategies. Okay?
So that's a limiting factor on that, those particular revenues. You will see that it would just, it goes straight into the general fund. It's not a segregated, it doesn't have a specific use, but still only in the unincorporated area. Headed on to the next page, our franchise fees, also state statute reference there.
Do you have these on the slide, or?
Yes, sir, I do. My mistake. I'm not forwarding.
Put these up, because they don't have that as a handout.
So there we go. So here was the, the slide I was talking about previously. I'm going to move on to franchise fees. Thank you, sir. I'd forgotten I had the clicker in my hand. There's our franchise fees, the state statute that associated with it. Again, unincorporated area only. You can see the, the 18, almost 19 million that we are estimating for that. Again, it goes into the general revenue, and it would be by franchise agreement. That's how we would enact that one. You'd have to have agreements with each of the, the different utility providers out there.
What, what is that in an actual, so we're talking phone, cable, I mean, what are, and then how much is a percentage of their bill? Or, and so looking at what that actually would mean to a homeowner?
Yes, sir. So it's a, in this case, it's electricity and gas. That's what's allowed under the state statute.
Okay.
Electric, both, in both cases, it's 6% is generally what is charged. And I have to say that it's, it's sort of, we talked about it, a rule of thumb. It comes in common law. It's not specifically spelled out in state statute, but that's, you'll see what most of the municipalities are charging as well.
And we currently charge zero.
Yes, sir. Nothing.
So people should know how much less expensive it is to live in unincorporated county than all those big cities. Commissioner Long?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And that used to be a huge issue in the Seminole area way back when we were talking about annexation. So my question is, just to back up for one minute, I think it was on the utility taxes. Did you say the total for all of that would be about 3 million?
No, ma'am. I've put it back on the screen there. Our estimate would be 32 million.
Oh, 32. That's a very big difference.
Yes, ma'am. So.
Thank you.
Yes.
You can see it broke down on the slide up there.
And it is.
Right, but my, my point is that 32 million can only be utilized in unincorporated, correct?
That's correct. Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Please continue. I just wanted to make sure. What?
Let's, let's clarify that. It is, it can only be charged to the unincorporated residents.
Right.
So, but it is a general fund. So you, so you could spend it county-wide, but it's only coming from unincorporated residents. So not, that you practically, you really would want to target that if you wanted to. For instance, when we talk about local roads, which is just in the unincorporated areas, or something like that, then that might be a potential revenue source. But it is just a general revenue.
Well, yeah, but that's, I didn't say it right, but in my head, I'm thinking, how do you, how would you, let's just pretend we decided to go down this road, how would you message that, that it isn't double taxation when so many of the municipalities already charge those things?
Well, so for, so for instance, with local roads, that is our, and you're going to see this next month. Our local roads is just for unincorporated areas. And so if we wanted to do this as a revenue source to improve our infrastructure on local roads, that would be a revenue source that you could generate additional money if you so chose to go that way. And then it would be used for, it would be charging unincorporated residents, and it would be used for unincorporated residents. So that is a, that is a, a choice and an option that we have. That's the reason we're breaking these down, and whether they're unincorporated or they could be county-wide.
But they're not getting charged that now in the unincorporated, so it's not double.
Right, no, but the cities are.
The cities are charging that, and then they're using it for whatever purpose they use it for.
Correct.
This fee, correct.
Correct.
Commissioner Flowers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just a question. For roads like the 49th Street that separates Gulfport and the city of St. Pete, I know that there were some questions at times, especially when Mayor Yates was trying to do some road improvements, that the road was a county road, not, it didn't belong to the city. So what would we do in that instance?
So, so we have, we have three different types of roads. And we're going to, we're going to get into this next month, and we're going to break this down for you. But we have three different types of roads. We have two main arterials and collectors, and then, and then local roads. And, and I'm looking back to staff so they can correct me when I misspeak here. But, and we, and we know the lane miles for each one of them, and we're going to break those down. And so we have both. And, and so we have, but we also have revenue sources that some are just unincorporated, and some go to countywide. And, and the penny for Pinellas, for instance, when we, when we spend money for arterials, that goes right through municipalities. And so we have both. We have both, and we're going to break that down. What we were trying to do with this is kind of show you different revenue sources. As then, when we talk about infrastructure, then we've got some choices on if we want to put more money towards things. And we'd have to figure out, you know, is, are we trying to solve an unincorporated issue or a county-wide issue, you know, for the different types of roads that we have.
That's County Road 611, Commissioner Flowers, most important road in Pinellas County. Commissioner Seal?
Thank you. So with the franchise fees, the, if we had to do it by agreement, then the utility would have to agree to sign that agreement with us.
They would, but you, you have some authority in that area to allow them the franchise. So it is, it is an agreement, but the cards are held on this side of the agreement.
Okay. Could you explain, I know it's not on any of the other coming slides, but the solid waste fee that is charged in some of the cities?
I, I can explain some of it. I'm not sure. I didn't quite come prepared for that. But yeah, the solid waste fee that we charge is a disposal fee. It's a gate fee, a tipping fee. So when the waste is brought, they charge per ton, per weight.
Correct.
And, and that is, that is charged to anyone that comes in the gate. I will confess, I'm not familiar with the nuances of it and what the amount is, but that, that is how it is charged and why it is charged.
Right, but do this, it looks like some of the cities charge a solid waste fee. Is it just for their, their own garbage?
That, that would be a collection fee that you're looking at. What I'm, what I'm... That would be a collection fee that you're looking at. What I'm talking about is.
A monthly, okay, all right. I was trying to get clarity around that.
There is also, there are franchise fees in municipalities where they would franchise out the collection in those areas. We didn't explore it here. Theoretically, we could look at that in the unincorporated area as well. I just don't have it on any of these slides. You're right.
Which, incidentally, I talked with staff, because in the comp plan, they were planning on taking out franchise for garbage collection as a policy. So, I asked them about that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Commissioner Eggers?
Yeah, I remember when I first got to the county commission, probably within a month, I got a call from somebody that said, "Can you come up here and look at this situation in my front yard?" And I said, "Sure." So, I got up there, and there was an RV parked in their front yard. And I said to myself, "Well, obviously, this is against the rules. This can't possibly be." And in fact, they said, "Well, they could park this thing parallel to the road. It's okay in unincorporated county." So, I keep, from that moment forward, I, you know, you can choose to live in a city or choose to live in a county. And from that moment forward, I told people that live in unincorporated, that have an HOA, hang on to your HOA, if that's the way, otherwise, you're gonna go back to the codes that we have in the county. And I also, so I guess my point in that is that they're, they live in the county for reasons. They don't want lights. They don't want these extra taxes. And I'm not trying to be, this isn't like, we don't already know that, but it's really a part of that, I wanna just call it the culture of living in the county, in Pinellas County. It's a different way of living. And I remember many folks that were thinking about annexing, they would always, at the city, because this is what the cities do, they had a formula for everything that would kinda work out. Is it cheaper to live in the city or cheaper to live in the county? And, you know, invariably, it was always cheaper to live in the county. But the city would always say, "But you have all these other wonderful things that, you know, we want you." But, so I just, again, in the perspective of what we're talking about, I just think we have to keep that, obviously, close to our, close to the conversation, because it is, it would change things dramatically, not only money-wise, maybe money-wise would be the least of the change, but just the way people look at why they live in unincorporated. They live in unincorporated for a lot of reasons. I don't wanna simplify it too much. Anyway, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, keep going.
With your permission, I'll continue on with a few more slides. The next one was a, another question regarding ad valorem tax in the Health Department millage. So, right now, we're charging 0.790 mils. Under state law, we could go up to a full half of a mil, 0.5, if we wanted. We would, we would generate another $7.3 million if we were to do that. It is something that we could do in the budget process in September, and building to September when we got to that point.
And so, different from the other one, that is really unincorporated types of fees, this one would be countywide, and what it would do is, it would be shifting dollars that we currently put in from the general fund, and then you would be shifting those around, but then that frees up general fund dollars to address any countywide issues that you may wanna do.
And my question on this is, it says, "How to levy is referendum." I don't, I don't think that's the case. We already are able to, but if we went to the full levy, we would have to have, I think, under the state statute, unanimous vote, because it would be more than that. You know, remember those levels at which you have to get a majority, supermajority, and?
So, the referendum there means to get in the door, just to start charging it. To up the amount, you do not need a referendum.
Okay.
Forgive me for, yes. And yes, it would very likely require a unanimous vote. Every year, you have to make those calculations for Department of Revenue, but you're right. It would, it would most likely be unanimous to get there.
But if we ended up considering it, you might wanna figure out what it, levels would produce what different monies, if it was a majority versus supermajority versus unanimous, if people are interested. So.
As you said where she's going, so then you wouldn't have to have a unanimous vote at certain levels.
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Eggers?
Yeah, to that conversation, Christian. So, I can't remember when we did, when we upped the nursing, to do the nurse in every school, we just did that here, and we did it by majority, right? It wasn't, okay.
Yes, that's correct.
So, yeah.
And it was because of the level of the increase was small, relatively speaking.
So, okay, that would be good to know.
Yeah.
We'll break, we'll break that down.
And what the, so, there's a cap on how many mils that you can go in this fee, in this fund, correct?
Yes, sir, correct.
And remind me where we're at, and?
So, we are, right now, at 0.790 mils, and the cap is 0.500 mils. So, you could go a half a mil on this one.
I had thought, when we did this, I thought we were much closer to the cap than what we apparently, okay.
Yes, sir. And there is another cap, just to keep in mind, and that's the 10-mil cap on all countywide together. So, just, just for reference, that's also in the mix.
And so, and there's also the spending side of the equation, where we spend money on state and other entity functions, that certainly, if we wanted to use that money for countywide priorities, we certainly could do that. Commissioner Girard, did you have something?
I think it's confused not being a mat major or anything. So, if we were actually at half a mil, we'd only produce 7 million more?
No, I wasn't clear. The, that is another tenth of a mil. So, if we were to add .1 on, it would be another 7 million. No, ma'am, you're not.
All right.
All right.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Seal?
And I, Chris, thank you. I just wanted to make sure people knew that anytime we do millage from other funds, not all funds, but some funds, it goes towards the maximum of 10 mils.
Right.
So, there's only 10 mils allowed in the MSTU, and 10 mils allowed in the countywide funds.
That's correct. Yes. And then?
Because you always have to kinda keep that in mind if you ever.
You do. And, and I could say, too, we don't have any voted debt. That would not be voted debt. Any general obligation bond would be a separate of those two tens as well. So.
I would never recommend doing a general obligation bond.
I'm just, I'm just giving you the law as I know it. So. So.
Carry on.
Our next one, our next one is a sales tax for transportation, which you are all familiar with. You've discussed it for, for many meetings. I will give you some numbers down there at the bottom. A full penny would be 147 million. It is a countywide. There are, there are counties in the state that levy this right now for transportation. Some use it for transportation infrastructure. Some use it for other transportation services out there. So, that one, you're, you're well aware of, and I don't think I need to get too deep into that one. But there are different levels that you can, that you could choose on that. And then finally, just some, some additional reading, if you were so inclined. We have our very own revenue manual that you can go to at that, at that address. We have put that together. It kinda gives the pedigree of every revenue that we have out there. Another source is the Local Government Financial Information Handbook, which is put out by EDR, a state agency. Take a look there. And again, that document that I handed out, and I wanna thank Ford Pinellas for putting it together and updating it. So, that's the end of my presentation. Can answer any questions you may have.
Commissioner Seal?
And just so, because I want this primer all in one place for myself, what does 1 mil in the MSTU produce versus 1 mil countywide at the present time?
I wish I'd come prepared with that. Could I get that, could I get that to all of you shortly?
Yeah, I just, I'm gonna keep all the information together. And then also, what would a gas tax produce at this point?
I can get all that back to all of you.
All right, thanks.
Further questions? All right, we'll let you off easy today.
All right. Thank you all.
All right. Anything else on, I'm sorry, Commissioner Seal?
And I'm sorry, who is the group of three? On the strategic plan, it said forthcoming topics were gonna be a report from the group of three? And I'm assuming that's you, Wit, and Brad Miller?
No, that's, that was one of the parking lot items. It was the building study that we've been going through. It was, it was referenced as the group of three back in January at that meeting.
Okay. I was like going.
You got me. I didn't, I don't know.
Now, instead of an acronym, we have a phrase.
That sounds like the senators that the president has to consult with, you know? Anything else?
So, what we really wanted to do is, ahead of having the discussion, just trying to put out all the different, you know, revenue options. And so, then Wit and us are gonna present on the third, and really talk about transportation issues and infrastructure. And then, you know, just, and we don't have to solve it that day. What we really wanna get a sense is what your priorities are, and where you kinda wanna go with that. And then, based upon that feedback that you provide us, then we can kinda work towards the budget this year, you know? And this gives us time to formulate different ideas and options. And I spent from Osmar to the parking lot here, talking with the sheriff this morning, you know, and trying to, and I wanna make sure we're, we're in sync, you know, ahead of, way ahead of the budget. So, some of these are big, big items, you know, and I wanna make sure that we have time to respond and get your feedback on those, well ahead of June, when we're rolling out a budget. So.
Great.
Fair enough.
Okay.
Thanks, Chris. Agenda?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go on. We got, you know, various items on the front page, different reports. Item number 12 is the first item. That is a cooperative funding agreement with South Florida Water Management District for Habitat Restoration at Roosevelt Creek. This is $350,000 in funding, and it regards the county match of the same amount. Item 13 is the same thing, but this is for a supplement to the advanced metering infrastructure project. And so, they, this provides some funding because it works towards water conservation. And again, that's within our capital improvement plan for utilities. Item 15 is a Gulf Coast Review Business Observer for Advertisement for Delinquent Real Estate Tax List. Item number 16 is an agreement with Creative Contractors. And Derek, are we, are we, are we gonna do a short presentation on this project? Yep. So, we really haven't, and Joe's coming up, but we, we haven't really, we've been working with the sheriff's office and out at the jail complex, and this is for improvements to security and the way they have entrances and stuff like this. It's all, it's been discussed back, you know, when you were developing the penny for Pinellas, but this really, they've, they worked hard. So, this is for the construction manager at risk associated with that, and the next one is for design services. But let me turn that over to Joe, and they're gonna kinda outline what we're talking about here.
Thanks, Barry. Good morning, Joe Laurel for Administrative Services. This is a really important initiative to greatly improve the security, the security operations at the jail campus. Like Barry mentioned, this has been going on for quite a while. We've been working very closely with sheriff's staff to program and plan this project. The project consists of the demolition of several structures. In just a few minutes, I'll have Derek Weaver, our manager of building and design, come up and actually go through a very short presentation of what the project's about. But it involves the demolition of a few pre-existing structures and the construction of what I call a checkpoint building, where secure entry building. So, basically, from this point, no one shall pass, is what it amounts to. Everybody's gotta go through one building to get on that campus. So, we really should greatly enhance the security on that campus. I also have ex-lieutenant Roberts from the sheriff's office, who's here today, to ask us any operational questions regarding this project, to be here. Project will be built, like Barry said, on a construction management-at-risk delivery process. And what that basically means is that there's two phases to it. On Tuesday, the first phase will be asking the board to approve the design portion of the contract and the pricing portion of the contract. Creative contractors will work with county staff to develop the actual guaranteed maximum price to build this project once the design firm, Williams de Carr, completes the design. So, it's a two-phase process. Tuesday will be the first phase. Sometime in the foreseeable future, we'll come back to the board and ask you to approve the guaranteed maximum price to construct the project. And there really are some real advantages to going with this delivery process. Both the design firm and the construction firm both report to the owner, the county, as opposed to some of the other processes, we have to try to leapfrog the construction company to get to the design firm. So, they both report to the county, and we both have access to both. And we work together as a team to actually develop and construct this project. So, really feel this delivery process is gonna work well going forward. Derek, do you wanna come up and actually present the project?
And there, within your packet, there's a slide deck. Are you gonna go through that? Yeah, okay, good.
Yeah, yeah, there's a PowerPoint. Thank you for having me. Morning, commissioners. My name's Derek Weaver. I manage, it's the first time I've been here, so it's probably the first time you've seen me, but I manage building, design, and construction for Pinellas County. As Joe mentioned, we've put a lot of work up to this point to generate a design criteria package, which generally outlines the programming and what the building may look like. We still need to go through a full construction document phase. That's what we'll be asking for approval for on Tuesday. Let me see, I have control. So, to get into the, the purpose of the project is to create a single point of entry for the public. It, what we're calling the new secure entry center. This will give the public one point of entry. Now, there's a, there's a guard shack out there, and people can come onto the campus, and the parking's co-mingled, secure and pub, semi-public. This'll divide the public from the secure area. So, anybody that's coming into the campus for a short-term public drop-off, or to pick up property, for bail bonding, picking up inmates, being released, and if anybody has any questions or needs directions or anything. So, that'll all be in a public side of the building, in the lobby space. They will not have to go through security for those kind of procedures. So. But for longer-term visitors, they're still short-term, but like, say, attorneys and clergy, anybody that enters the campus will have to go through security. So.
And if you recall, commissioners, we funded, I guess, a year before last, additional mags for the sheriff to where, when people were going in different buildings, they have, they go through a screening process in there. That was a shortcoming within the, the security, so we enhanced that. This'll consolidate that down, to where the single entry point divides it out, makes it a much more secure facility.
Right. So, it's also, it's also a single point of release for inmates as well. So, now, currently, inmates are being released from central, which is farther back into the campus. They're released, and they walk their way out to the front gate. This will put them right out the door. They are in the public side, so they won't be wandering around the site. So. Another part of this project is the, is the entry checkpoint. So, part of this project will be constructing a vehicle checkpoint building with a canopy. So, all vehicles that are entering the site now will have to go through security. And there'll be, there'll be a bypass card access lane for sheriff's staff and facility staff and so forth. But again, all vehicles will be screened. So.
So, even though folks that are going to the Sally Port, for example, to take a prisoner, they're gonna go through the same thing?
Pull up the next slide, which, you've got a, kind of a campus design. You can see. There you go. So, kinda walk through that.
Right. So, if someone enters the site, or wants to come into the jail facility from, say, 49th Street, which is where you enter in, on this slide, if you were going to the south, there's the Criminal Justice Center. You would either have to go to that new vehicle entry on the right-hand side there, or the new public parking area and walk into the secure entry center. So, you can't access the site anywhere else. So you can't access the site anywhere else. You have to go through the checkpoint or into the lobby space of the new building.
Even the other law enforcement agencies in the county that are bringing prisoners there?
No. Yeah, the prisoners will have to go through the new vehicle entry, and they most likely would have card access to pass through. And they go... All new inmates are entered through the west side of Central Building. That will not change.
As you know, now, I mean, now, they go around, but it's an unsecure area, and you could have pretty much anybody driving out there.
Right. Perimeter road.
It's not the most ideal situation. This will segregate all of that type of traffic.
Good morning. I'm Lieutenant Roberts from the sheriff's office. And just to clarify on this one particular topic. Historically speaking, prior to the existence of Central Division, which is our booking facility now, A-Wing, which is a South Division building, used to be our booking facility. At that time, all law enforcement officials, people dropping off prisoners and whatnot, had to come through our existing checkpoint. It wasn't until Central Division was built where our booking facility was moved to the backside of our facility that it became a non-restricted access lane for law enforcement. So traditionally, law enforcement did have to go through our checkpoint. But with the new building of Central Division, that kind of made a bypass for them. So with this layout, everybody's going to have to go through this checkpoint. It will be manned. It won't be a choke point for dropping prisoners off. It'll be a fast exchange, just check in and ride around to the backside of the building.
Thank you.
Commissioner Eggers?
Yes, sir. Just, I mean, what's driving... I certainly see how that makes it more secure. And maybe we don't want to get into this, you know, publicly, I don't know. But what issues are we having? And maybe that's, again, discussed offline.
What we're having right now has been inmates are released from Central Division. Central Division literally is in the center of our compound. So we'll have newly released inmates walking through the secure part of our compound prior to getting to our checkpoint and getting on the sidewalk. And there have been occasions where we have found newly released inmates walking into areas of the compound that they don't need to be. Vice versa, when you have members of the public coming to drop off bond money, coming to drop off property, they have to check in at checkpoint and then walk to the center of the compound unaccompanied. And we, again, we have found individuals in spots that they do not need to be within the facility.
Without getting into, you know, what is there now, this significantly improves the security and the way in which people move. You shouldn't be able to move freely in a secure campus, which is what you have now.
Correct.
And it was pretty appalling, I mean, you know, when I toured the area with the sheriff and stuff. So this will segregate those. This has been discussed for a long time. This now brings it on. What it'll also do is clear out some of those buildings that will never, ever be used. It'll free up the campus to where you can envision and just make it very, very clear for people where they're going, you know? Somebody's coming, whether you're visiting an inmate or whether you're, you know, dropping off, whether they're being released. It just centralizes it. It'll be a much, much better managed site.
Commissioner Flowers?
Just a question. Was any thought given to, instead of having just the one lane for entryway that if officers are going to have their scan card, if you will, where they could just scan in, would you be able to make it two lanes so that you would have that one that is express, where they scan and they go on about their business, and then you have the other where persons will actually have to stop?
We actually have three lanes going in and two lanes coming out.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I couldn't see it, so.
And commissioners, I'm sure Derek would volunteer to take you on a tour. If, you know, that way you could see the site if you haven't been out there. This is a lot of money, and so I'm sure...
Yeah, yeah.
A volunteering.
Absolutely.
I would love to take a tour. Just make sure you know, give us us free.
Well, it helps. It helps to visualize and be out on site. And I, you know, I did that, and I think it really kind of brought in what we're actually doing. You can only get so much from a picture.
Any other questions? Just a reminder to turn your mic on when you're talking and turn it off when you're done. All right, carry on.
All right. So the general scope of the building itself, as you can see, approximately about 11,300 square foot of building. That contains the lobby, the property, window, bail bonding, security screening, and then the inmate release area. The vehicle entry screening building is obviously a smaller building, but it's a larger canopy in the lanes itself. So like we discussed, it has the three incoming and two outgoing gated vehicle lanes. And then we divide the parking. Instead of having a cocomingled, public, semi-secure parking, we definitely have public parking outside the secure fence line and then secure parking inside the fence line. And then, obviously, we have, you know, as someone mentioned earlier, estimates are estimates. We have a total probable construction cost of about $12 million. We think that's a pretty reasonable number. And then, we kind of went over the site plan, and here is what our programming and floor plan have developed. As you can see, there's a large public area. But everybody would have to come in. Anybody entering the site would come in. There's a front reception desk, and they would have to go through that security screening to go through, you know, secure doors out into the campus. So nobody's wandering around the campus. You have to go through security to get onto the campus. And as far as prisoners being released, they're coming from Central. They are escorted to this Sally Port where they are still in the secure area to be released. So once they come out those doors, they're in a public area. They're not wandering around the site, so.
Question. But to your point, this really allows them to be checked before they're wandering the campus? Because after they get through this checkpoint, they still have... They're still kind of working their way back?
They're escorted to this Sally Port where they'll come and pick up their personal belongings and then be released.
Oh, then we escorted to there?
Yes.
Okay. And then on the way in, people going in?
Inmates going in are brought into Central.
Okay. All right.
Yep, on the west side of Central. And here's some of the conceptual designs, some of the renderings that have been developed. You can see the vehicle entry canopy, and then the distance is the new secure entry building, the modern design. We're really excited to get... We've worked hard to get to this point. We're excited to get started on it. Again, we'll be reviewing this on Tuesday for approval for design and the construction manager at risk. So if you have any additional questions...
Commissioner Seal?
What is the number of square foot that's projected? Plus, what is the total budget at this point?
Yeah, it's about 11,000 square foot of building space, and we estimate the cost to be about $12 million.
Okay. And have there been any issues out there with... I mean...
I'm sure Lieutenant Roberts can speak to that.
Obviously, this is going to have operations and maintenance for the county going forward. And so are we going to realize any savings through less personnel needed? Or is there going to be some kind of rate of return for our investment?
On the screening side, that's something that we are going to look at because right now, we're doing screening in three different pods. And so there may be efficiencies when you consolidate those down. But that's something we'll have to talk to sheriff about. Because now you also have a gate, though, that'll be secure, that'll have to be manned. So we're going to look at those items. But there was a real gap here that is... This addresses that.
Charlie?
Yes, sir.
And the funding will be coming from the penny?
Yes. And this was planned as part of the original penny.
Okay. It was part of... And what was that orig... Do we have an original estimate on all of this before? And how much has that changed?
Yeah.
I don't know the answer to that. I guarantee it's less.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it was about $7 million originally, the estimate. But you're talking about a project, Commissioner, that was programmed originally about seven years ago. So this has been a long time coming.
So mostly in cost of goods, not necessarily scope?
Yeah, mostly, I would think, yeah. I mean, the building itself, the original building, wasn't quite like this. This takes care of all of the sheriff's needs and operational issues going forward as well, so, yeah. But a lot of it has to do with the current market conditions.
And frankly, it also cleans up the site. I mean, they originally were scoping a building, but you've got empty structures out there that'll never be used. They don't meet any of the current... You couldn't house inmates in there. And they're sitting in the middle of the campus, and they become a security risk. I mean, why, you know, why do we have those still standing? And so this really does clean up. So it's a far bigger project than, I think, what was originally envisioned in just that building. But we're cleaning up that campus and addressing a number of security concerns.
Commissioner Long?
Yes, and I'm sorry if you've already addressed this, anyone, but are those buildings that are out there that are currently vacant, are they all coming down?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, nice.
Yes.
That really does clean it up.
This cleans it up. And I didn't, you know, I really wanted us to address all of that. The sheriff and his staff, you know, gave us some fair end-up tour and kind of the historical perspective on that. So they've come together to really try to address some longstanding needs.
We're currently working on a design right now to demo the minimum security one and two and A barracks.
They've been empty for years, quite frankly, so, yeah.
And none of those costs that you're talking about are in here?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, they're all in the $12 million?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I just didn't see any...
It's all in the one project.
Yeah.
Okay.
Makes more sense now because at a budget of $12 million, 11,000 square feet, that's $1,000 and $1,090 a square foot.
That was kind of...
That sounds like a really...
Yeah, there's a lot involved there.
The entry building, the vehicle.
I would really encourage, and Derek, we'll send an email to you with your contact information. I would really encourage you to go out and take a tour of the site.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Seal. $300, $400 a square foot is a lot. In today's world, it's, you know, getting more normal. But, you know, these numbers incorporate a lot more, so it'll be nice to see what we're talking about. It's not all listed here, so it would be helpful to have, you know, that included, so. Yeah, I'd take... I want to do the tour, too, so.
Very good. Further questions? I did have one question for Mr. Laurel. This had nothing to do with this specific project.
Sure.
But I noticed we had one bidder, correct?
Right.
And I didn't know if we had a policy set in stone, or it's a feel, or what... When you have a multimillion-dollar project and we only have one bidder, or we only have two bidders, is there a best practices? We should always have three bidders? And what's our policy? How do we handle those kind of situations?
You always try to source competition, obviously, Commissioner. Two bidders is considered competitive. But market conditions on a secure campus, I mean, honestly, there's so much work out there right now. I was glad to get even one bidder on this, I'll be honest with you. Yeah.
You what?
So what it basically boils down to...
There were two submittals.
Yeah.
Oh, I only saw one ranking, that's why...
That was for the design firm, though. The construction was only one, yeah.
And obviously, this is a firm that we've worked with and has...
Oh, yeah. In fact, they're mobilized on that campus now. We hope we can get economy of scale because they're actually constructing the large core consolidation project on the other side of the campus, so.
And so when we have a project this big, we have a database of contractors or firms that we send it out, and everyone has an opportunity to take a look at it?
Absolutely, yeah. In fact, we sent this out to over 400 firms. We did call a lot of the firms decline, quite frankly, because of the secure conditions on this campus. It makes it tough from a construction perspective. Especially when they have to picket litter right now because the market is so exploding with projects. They'll go to a project that they know they don't have to deal with this kind of operating issue, so.
Charlie, just one more question.
Yes, sir.
And then on that same note, so when you have the one bidder, then they're required to try to get three sub bids on all their work, or...
Well, yeah. The way the construction management process works, the construction manager risk process, this will actually be competitively procured, and it'll use our contractors. So when it comes right down to it, this will be competitively procured. We may only have one prime firm, but there's going to be many, many subs this will go out to.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 18, the Sheriff's Department's support for a county development at the warm tax deduction process. I know some of you have great history individually, and so this will be on. Again, this is the initial approval.
I apologize. So then they'll work... This is the initial approval. Then they'll get into all the financials to determine whether the company qualifies and at what amount. Item 19 is the Dennis Pinellas Housing Compact. As you know, you've been working on the Affordable Housing Compact for a while. This really brings all of our community partners together and says we're going to have a coordinated approach to addressing affordable housing and attainable housing here in the county. The Housing Compact has a commitment for the partners to work together on a number of housing-related issues, and that's development of a housing action plan, creating a regulatory toolkit for best practices, creating corridor planning strategies that looks at housing, jobs, and educational opportunities, addresses housing inequities and the impacts of affordable housing, provides for a diversity of housing types to provide for different needs, and a joint education and communication initiative. So this is a good step for us to work cooperatively and collaboratively throughout the county.
Commissioner Long?
Thank you for all of that that you just said, Barry. My question is, is it possible to get a little map or a chart that shows us where the affordable housing projects that are ongoing right now, where they are within the county?
Sure.
I think that would be very helpful to be able to visually see and where they might be anticipated or planned as well, just because...
The ones that we have that have submitted. So we can go back and look for the last couple of years, the ones you've approved, and then the ones that are, that we're currently working with?
Yeah. I think that would be very helpful, especially for those of us that get questions about, what are the plans? Where are these places going to be?
And the hard part is, you know, not all of them come through the county. And so, you know, you've got a lot of affordable housing projects where they get, you know, tax credit monies or things like that, and it never... It's never submitted to the county. So I'm not sure it'll be a completely exhaustive list, but we'll do our best to try to provide that.
Sure. Okay, thank you very much.
There is a sort of a map on page five of the presentation that shows where the existing ones that have gone through the Housing Finance Authority are.
All right. Item number... Item number... I'll keep going unless there's more questions.
Item number 20 is Wheaton Island Preservation Management Plan. This is required to be updated every 10 years. This is for... To submit to the state of Florida.
And I was going to ask this at some point, and it's just convenient, but at this point. But we had several years ago, so after the recession, this area was really scaled back as far as staffing and volunteers and everything. And we had actually directed that it open up some other days of the week. And is it back up to full staffing and full-time? Or is it still just a part-time facility?
As part of the budget that you approved for increasing and perks staffing, it was to increase this. Exactly how much, I would have to defer to staff, but that was the intent, was to get back to the staffing that was before.
Okay. But if, when we have a chance, I would like a full answer to that.
Okay. I'll ask Jill to get with Paul on that.
Yeah, that was a... I mean, it was down to like, very skeleton.
Yes.
And we kept adding on, adding a Saturday, adding. I mean, it was a step-by-step adding as the budget improved over those years.
Let me get you a full report on that, and we'll submit that to you.
Thank you.
Item number 21 is declaring a portion of a fee-owned property as surplus and grant authorization. This is part of the, let me see, the North Highland Avenue Road Improvement Project. And so we're just exchanging some properties to be able to make a better alignment. Item number 22 is a road transfer with the city of Clearwater. Item number 23 is a Third Amendment to Agreement with Forestry Company for the Eco System Management...
Good morning, Commissioners, and yes, Commissioner Flowers, it's in Pasco County, so it is a little interesting. You, this third amendment is actually related to writing our proposed budget number for the balance of the contract that we have with the company that's actually called the Forestry Company for ecosystem management. We had, as a result of some of the rains last summer and a number of other activities, including the second amendment, which you had authorized for the, a mobile home for one of the employees to be there, we had actually run short a little bit on what we had anticipated to spend, so we're asking you to increase the contract, which doesn't expire until March of '23, based upon our expenditures thus far in the five-year term. I can try and be more specific if you'd like, but we had gauge replacements, we had additional roadway work that we had to do, some, because of the rains and other things. I'm happy to try to answer any questions, we won't get money back from this activity for years, but it will happen.
Commissioner Long?
Thank you, Jill, it, it's interesting that this is a subject matter on our agenda here for our next meeting, because it's been quite a while since we've had any update on what's going on up there, and as I recall, last time we had a discussion, it was all about changing the management, and how are they doing, are we, at what point will we get an update on how they're, how they're doing, what they're doing, are there any new things that are going on that we might want to know about? I mean, this is a gorgeous piece of property, I wish it was right here, plugged into the.
So you awarded this contract back in 2018, so it has been.
A while.
Yeah, it's been a little while, we don't normally, if things are going well.
Yeah.
I mean, they're going great, it's a good company.
The company's working well, I mean, I haven't heard any issues, in fact, I think they're, they're working very collaboratively, so, from that standpoint, and, and just so you also know, you know, there's, there was another issue, which was the, you know, the taxes and on the property, and we've tried to resolve those, and, and, you know, and I met with Pasco County, and then staff, as a follow-on, has been working with them on how we can work together, because some of their residents want access, you know, and, and so, you know, we've been working with them on a cooperative arrangement to be able to act, open up and let them pay for, but open up a piece of it where it makes sense to, and so that's going to be a follow-on agreement, they haven't finalized that yet, but everything seems to be working well.
And that agreement will be with Pasco County, we also have, we're processing right now an agreement with Pasco County Schools that we've had historically on a year-to-year basis, that allows them to come and go to the visitor's center, see the property, see the environmental assets and so forth, so it, it gets visitors, kind of.
Didn't we also, if I may, didn't we also have an agreement with Penal's County Schools, kids used to take trips up there?
Yes.
Do we still?
Yes.
And do they go?
I have not personally verified that, but I can find out if they actually have used the authorization.
It's a long way up there.
Yeah, it's a long, that's like, takes two days.
What? It doesn't take two days.
I was joking.
They, they also, there were some issues with financing for providing transportation for field trips.
Okay.
And things like that.
I'm happy to confirm, Commissioner.
It's been a while, yeah, it's been a while.
Commissioner Eggers?
Yeah, I, I agree, I think, you know, it'd be nice, even if it's just a half hour at one of our workshops, just to kind of get an update on kind of all that's going on up there, it is fascinating, it is such a unique property for, for us, and, but just to get an update on what's going on.
Why don't we tie that in, when we have an, we have a couple of agreements that are going to be coming to you, when we do that, I'll ask Paul to, I mean, I'm sorry, Megan, to also then provide an update on.
Perfect.
The management issues.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gerard?
Just, if we're going to do an update on that, last time I was up there with Whitney, the turtles were dying, bunches of them, so I'm just wondering if we can get an update on that.
Okay, I, my understanding from the, our contractor is that that situation has righted itself, but I want to confirm that, and we'll provide you that as part of the update. Yeah, gopher turtles, yeah.
Okay.
I want to just quickly mention on your consent agenda, under item number 14, there is a report of lawsuits that have been filed against the county, there's just one case there, it is a quiet title case. So under 24 and 25, these are both cases that we're seeking your authority to file, these are cases that arose from an investigation undertaken by your Office of Human Rights, they both involve housing discrimination cases on a basis of disability, one of them relates to some parking issues, and the other one relates to some service animal issues, so those are two cases that we'll be seeking your authority to file. And again, a reminder, those are handled by some outside legal services providers that we have contracts with. Under item number 26, this is a request from the tax collector for the board to direct him to make certain notices that are statutorily required that are related to delinquent taxes, and I have, at this point, no plans for any reports.
Item 29 is an appointment to Feather Sound from Commissioner Eggers.
I, I interviewed a couple of folks out there, so I don't know who, who else is coming up, but if, if you're coming up on a, somebody might be leaving and you need somebody to consider, you check with Kim, you might consider that person as well, two very interested and very capable people, so FYI, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On to public hearings, item 31 is a Tefram Resolution for Revenue Bonds for Learning Independence in amount of $7 million. Item 32 is a request for a zoning change, this is over in Leomin, this is a quasi-judicial for affordable housing, and it's voted 4-0, there is one letter of objection.
Commissioner Gerard?
Is this the one where we had a project replacing with affordable, with the old homes?
No, this is not the, the, what, what's it called?
Oasis Acres?
This is?
Oasis. Oh, it is?
Oh, it is, okay, I'm sorry, I take, I take that back, they did brief me on that, I just frankly forgot. This is changing the zoning to where we can get, in essence, what we want, and Thomas worked with the community, and the community supports that zoning change.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, I, I apologize, I got confused. Item 33 is a request for zoning change residential agriculture to urban residential, this is for a 29-unit townhome development. Now, you do have some objections on this, but the applicant has spoken with neighbors, and so we'll see if they were successful with that come Tuesday. Item 34 is an ordinance amending the county code, this is regulation pertaining to private sewer laterals, this provides so we can do permitting for the private sanitary sewers, and this will enable us to do the enforcement, so this is a companion item to 35, which then delegates authority to where we can implement the programs that Megan outlined for you as part of our private sewer lateral issues. Item 36, this is back, because we postponed this to a date certain, and so we'll either need to do one or two things, either postpone this again to the March 8th meeting, but staff is meeting with Brian and their, and them, trying to find a resolution to this, so hopefully they'll, and they're meeting again this afternoon, so hopefully we'll have more for you on Tuesday. And that's all I have.
All right, just a couple items, one, a reminder that you received an invitation, the commission has a table at the Urban League Lunch on February 25th, please let Courtney know if you're going to join us.
On that real quick, is the table open, because I, when I asked you earlier, and I didn't know, and I didn't want to not be able to have a seat, so I went ahead and bought a ticket, so if the table isn't full, what I'll do is, I would like to come to the county and I can just donate the ticket to, that I purchased to somebody, so.
Very good.
Let me know.
Yes, ma'am. And then, I think that's really all I have, anything else for the good of the order? All right, we are adjourned, see you Tuesday.